First of all.
Hello.
Is it good morning still? No, good afternoon. Alright, special session, Mayor and City Council Meeting, 1:00 PM, Wednesday, April 6th, 2022, City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you take?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with number three, interviews of candidates for city magistrate. First of all, good afternoon, Mrs. Natividad, Mrs. Natividad?
Miss Natividad. Your Honor.
Alright, and thank you for being one of the candidates for the city magistrate for the city in Nogales, first of all. And before we start with the interviews, what we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna do it individually, and I'll start, I'll start with me and then I'll go on down the line. But before that, could you give us a little background?
Sure, yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Garino, Honorable Vice Mayor Esther Valendez Lopez, City Attorney Mr. Massey, Deputy City Manager Mr. Kissinger, and honorable members of the city council. My name is Mary Lou Natividad, and I would want to be the next magistrate of the fair city of Nogales. I am from Tucson, but I would love to be your next city magistrate.
Can you give us a little part of your history?
Well, for my academic background, that's all in my resume, my work experience, but I think more importantly, I want to talk to you about my personal history. I, I came, I come from a family of immigrants. My family immigrated to the, the States in the eighties from the Philippines, and we settled in Seattle. And I adopted my daughter from the Philippines in 1994. I raised her as a single mother. I went to University of Washington, took my Masters of Law. I met my then-boyfriend, who is now my husband of over twenty years. He got a job with a minor coal mining company here in Arizona, and so we, we moved here. My, my daughter is still in Seattle, she lives there. So it's just me and my husband here, and our cat, I called her Sandenista because she's a rebel cat. She, she does not, she does not want to be petted, she's an outdoor cat, and that, that name stuck, Sandenista, the rebel cat. So that's my personal history in a nutshell.
Well, I'm so glad you have a cat. I have a couple, I have a couple. I don't wanna say how many, but actually, I don't have one. My wife has a cats. I just, I just pay for the food. But is there anything else you would like to express, even though we did two resume, a letter and stuff? Anything else you would like to express before we interview you?
I, I can talk to you more about my work experience. I've been a prosecutor with the city of Tucson for over seventeen years, over seventeen years of dedicated service with the city of Tucson as a public servant. I did my bit in, in keeping the, the roads of, of the city of Tucson safe for motorists, having prosecuted a lot of DUI cases, domestic violence cases. And in Tucson City Court, we have the specialized courts. We have drug, drug court, mental health court. And during the course of my over seventeen years with, with the city of Tucson Prosecutor's Office, I've handled all those sorts of cases. And then in September of 2020, I retired from my prosecutor job, and so I'm now a criminal defense attorney. And I have an office in downtown Tucson, and I represent people accused of misdemeanors and felonies in federal courts and, uh, courts of limited jurisdiction like municipal courts and city courts.
Well, that's, that's, that's good to hear. That's a lot of experience. I just wanna, you know, we had a judge, you know, that she moved up to the Superior Court, and she, she changed our court system here tremendously. Great, great job, you know. And I was very sorry to see her go. She just wanted to improve and go, you know, somewhere else, you know, not to leave us, but she's still in the county.
Right.
But, but, you know, and what she did was very impressive, what she did for the court system. And, and one of the things that she did, that she brought, was to allow, you know, people that had, you know, citations, or had warrants, or whatever they had, whatever problem they had, to allow them to, to come in and, and have a payment plan, and, and work with them, and work directly with the, uh, the Justice of the Peace in the JP Court in, in, in the county, and also work with the Superior Court. And, and, you know, she was really involved in the community, involved with the residents of Nogales when it comes to whatever violation they, they, they had. And those are the things that, you know, I, I look for, because I'm, I'm not a person that thinks, I'm an ex-police officer, okay? I'm not a person that thinks that, uh, uh, somebody that already is in trouble and worried to visit the court, to show up at the court, and then, and, and then go through a very, very hard process in the court. I think we need to help everybody. You know, not everybody has a thousand dollars to pay for a citation, or more, or whatever, you know? Not saying that you should not do your job, but I'm saying that there's ways. Could you tell me how, how would you go about doing something like that yourself?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor, for that question. As a matter of fact, I know the Honorable Vanessa Cartride from our Tucson City Court days, she was a public defender, I was a prosecutor. We had some cases together, but she was not there very long, but I do remember her, because she was very bright, and, and she, she really loved what she does, and, and, and she did good things too, at the city public defender's office in, in Tucson. I, I completely agree with you, Mayor. I believe in restorative justice. It, it's not just a matter of imposing fines, hefty fines, and, and incarceration. I, I, I believe that, you know, people who need rehabilitation, people who need counseling, I think that that, that should be the priority. And again, I agree with you that they should not, they should still pay their fines, but that should not be the, the primary consideration. And there are also options for fines. The fines can be converted into community service, which I think is very productive, because if, if, if they do community service in a nonprofit organization, and they don't have a job, hopefully that, that could lead into networking, so, so it will help them find a job, and, and, and help them feel productive, and, and that they're gonna have a, a, a more meaningful, meaningful encounter with the justice system, and hopefully diminish the, the chances of recidivism.
Yes, that's, that's a very good answer. And, and you know, it is very important, you know, it is very important, because like I say, you first confront the police officer, and that's not probably the best, and then after that, to confront the judge, you know, and, and, and that doesn't have interest in, but for you to pay the citation, or, or, you know, whatever, you know, there's, there's, there's ways of working it, and, and that's one thing that Vanessa brought to the city. She, she was very good at that, because I, I even not, I didn't get that from the employees. I got, the way she did her work, I got it from people that were there to see her because of citations, because she was good at it. And, and so, so with that, you know, I, I think, you know, I'm not gonna get into the legal part of it. I don't, I don't think I'm the person to be asking legal questions, but I do like to, the way you expressed that, and I think it's very good, and, and my concerns are basically the constituents in Nogales, and how they're treated in the court system. So with that, I'll pass my, my time to the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Well, I was really, really taking a, a good look at the reference that we got from you, and I see here that they mentioned you fairness and a sense of justice, which really, I really like. And on top of that, you also speak Spanish?
Ju- just, just very little, Your Honor.
But you understand.
Yes, a little bit, yes.
We're mostly Spanish-speaking here, so that's, most of your clients are gonna be?
Yes, yes.
So I really think you're very, very qualified for the job.
You just called them clients. Are they gonna be clients or?
Of course.
We can call them clients, I guess, that'd be a good one.
Yep. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much, Your Honor. You're next.
I'm next. Well, thank you for applying here at the city in Nogales, and we look forward to, you know, if, if you're selected, working with you, and, and giving you all the tools you need to, to run a good department. And to the mayor's point, i- it's very important to, to have some fairness, and, and do your job, but be fair. And we, we have a lot of people that come in from Nogales, Sonora. They got a population of five hundred thousand over there. We're, we're a population of about twenty thousand. So the, the minimum wage over there is ten dollars a day, but a lot of people come and buy their milk or their food, and, and a lot of people don't understand our traffic laws.
Yes.
And so, you know, that's where the fairness comes in, and, and you have to educate the people that, that come to your, to your bench, right? You have to give them an education, and, and then, from what I see, as far as your job description, you have, you can, you're, you have a certain independence of what you can do. It's not strictly that, this is a book, and I'm gonna throw it at you. You, you have, you, you use your judgment, your good judgment, as how you're gonna treat these people. And I liked your answer that, that you gave the mayor. That, that's, that's very good. We have to, we have to educate and, and protect these people, because they're the ones that are coming and spending their money here, so we can have a, a city and be able to pay the employees and, and run all the departments. We need the retail.
Yes.
So it, it's very important that we send the message that, that, you know, if, if you get into trouble, we will educate you, and, and if it's real severe, then you will get punched. But that, that's up to you.
Yes.
But, but that's, that's, that's a very good point that, that the mayor made, and I'm kinda reinforcing what the mayor said.
Yes.
And, and what the vice mayor are saying. And, and I see you get a well, you get along well with your coworkers and, and things like that. One thing that, that I wanted to ask you is, because you did, you did, you were prosecuting?
Yes, sir.
And then you were a criminal defendant.
Yes, now I'm a criminal defense attorney.
So how, how, how do you see those two, how do you compare?
In, in terms of what's more difficult, I, I find defense work more difficult. The reason being, when, when you're a prosecutor, you have the resources of the government behind you. When you're a defense attorney, your, your climb is uphill. You're, you're here, you know, representing a client. And even though some clients are guilty, and probably a lot of them are, it, it's the duty of a, a good attorney to, to fight aggressively for their clients, to make sure that they're not railroaded, to make sure that they get a, a fair deal, and, and that their rights are not trampled upon. When I was a prosecutor, I used my prosecutorial discretion to, to make sure that justice is served. I, I, I always wanted to balance the rights of the victims, and hold people accountable, but taking into consideration extenuating circumstances, but as to what made that person commit what he did. So my duty was not just to rock up convictions when I was a prosecutor, and I will, I always keep reminding myself of that, because, as I said, I came from a family of immigrants, and I've, I've seen how, you know, immigrants who are coming to this country, they are acclimating to their new environment, they have language barriers, they don't know the laws. It, it's, it's a really tough situation for them, and, and balancing that, I think, is the key. And having seen both sides, having seen the prosecutorial side making people accountable for their actions, and now defending them, I think I'm, I have this broader perspective of, you know, finding what's right, and, and treating people fairly and justly at all times.
Good, good answer. Thank you, thank you for that. And I, I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you very much for your answers, very good.
Thank you, Honorable Mr. Joe Diaz.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying for the city in Nogales. Well, basically, all the questions that I had, they already made them. For the record, I, I, I do like your, I like your answers. And like I said, I, I believe don't have any, any questions, because I already heard what I wanted to ask anyways. But I wish you the best, and I did like what, how you answered the questions.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can, you know, the bad, the bad part of being on the end part of the questionnaire is that, you know, they've already asked all the good questions. I think Mr. Diaz asked about three of them that I had here. So anyway, you know, although the job announcement states that we are a community of twenty thousand, we also deal with many residents that reside in Rio Rico, just minutes away north of us, which will work here and, and do their shopping here, and also from the US, from the residents from Nogales, Sonora, Mexico. At, at, in good times, you know, our community holds a floating population of about sixty thousand, to say the least. Do you think that, that workload will affect your performance on a daily basis? Could that affect your performance, and, and then, you know, because it's, it's more than you were expecting?
I am used to working overtime, if need be. When, when I was with the city of Tucson, we have huge caseloads too. And on top of issuing and, and filing complaints and charges, we, I had to do jury trials. And, and Mr. Massey here, as an attorney, would know how hectic and how, you know, the pressure that goes into preparation for, for jury trials. So I'm, I'm used to working hard and, and, and making sure that the, the good people of Nogales will, will get a magistrate who's gonna treat them fairly, who's gonna give them their day in court, and who will treat them with respect and dignity.
Right, thank you. And, and the other thing is, regarding the interpretation of the law, you know, there is a lot of residents from Nogales, Mexico, who don't understand the, the laws in the US. And will you keep somebody on hand to make that interpretation as clear as possible?
Of course, of course. That is very important. That's part of being fair and impartial. That is what every magistrate or judge should be, is fair, fair and impartial. And I do not speak Spanish fluently, but I, I, I'm hoping to hone on my skills of my, my, my Spanish-speaking abilities. But even the rules of court provides that, for pro se defendants, the judge has to treat them and, and give leeway and consideration to them, because they don't know the law. And even for prosecutors, when, when a pro se defendant wants to have a, a trial, for instance, a bench trial, the prosecutor is supposed to, to explain to the defendant how the process works. And we're obligated to do that. When I was a prosecutor, I did that. And if I would be lucky to be selected as your new magistrate, I will make it a point that that happens.
Okay. Well, thank you for your answers. You have a very complete resume, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. By the way, my daughter's Filipino. Yeah, so I lived a couple of years in the Philippines.
Oh, really?
Yeah. What part of the Philippines are you from?
Manila.
Manila, okay. Well, I'm glad you're here. And I have a couple of questions. Why do you wanna be a judge?
To me, it's a national progression of a career in law. So I had been a prosecutor representing the interest of the government. Now I am a defense attorney, so the next step is a judge or a magistrate. But why the city of Nogales? I was browsing the, the city website one day. My husband and I own a, a little, a business. We have rental properties. We, we buy fixer-uppers and, and then rent them out. And, and we're thinking of buying properties outside Tucson. So I was, you know, I was browsing the website. I saw this, this position for a magistrate position here in Nogales, so I thought I would apply for it. And, and I think Nogales, to me, is perfect, because it, it, you know, it, it has beautiful scenery, it is the county, it is the economic seat and county seat for Santa Cruz County. It is very rich in historical and cultural heritage, and it's the home of warm and friendly, friendly people. So what's not to like? So I thought I was gonna apply for it and give it my best shot.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. Please describe the most ethical dilemma you've had, you have encountered, and how you plan to handle it, and how would you handle it on the bench?
This happened when I was a prosecutor with the city of Tucson, and I know that all my examples are from my prosecutorial days, but then again, I spent, you know, over seventeen years at that position. So I had a, a conflict with, with my boss, the chief criminal deputy. A conflict in the sense of how are we gonna proceed with, with the case? My boss wanted to just dismiss the case, but my ethical duty as a prosecutor was to prosecute. And my boss's reasons for not prosecuting are not exactly in the up and up. He's friends of this person, so, you know, we should just probably let it go. So what I did was, I went to the city attorney, and the city attorney backed me up. My boss was not so thrilled with my, with my going over his head, but I went to him, I apologized, I expressed my concerns and my feelings, and we made up. But I, I follow my heart, for the most part. I do what I think is right.
So a follow-up question to that is, so how would you deal with any potential conflicts that you might have with the three branches of government, including mayor and council?
Well, there is the independence of each branch of the government. You know, the, the judiciary, which will be the magistrate position, the city council, which is the legislative branch of city government, and of course, the mayor, the, the chief executive of the city. So I would just rather not get involved because of the independence of the judiciary. But I would be more than happy, and, and I would actually ask the mayor and the city council to, if, if there is any way I could contribute to doing and, and fulfilling what the top priorities of the city government is, without, without infringing or without running afoul of that independence that each branch of city government has. But I, I would want to be involved. I, I would, I would want to see the, the city government succeed in its priority goals.
Okay, one last question. Please explain your philosophy when it comes to public involvement and, and practicing, you know, giving of your time to the community.
I am very active in the community, in the Filipino community. But once I become a judge or magistrate, I, I, I will change the, the type of volunteer work that I'm, I'm gonna be doing, because I do not want to, I want to avoid all appearances of impropriety. A judge or magistrate has to be fair and impartial at all times. And the judge or magistrate should not show any favoritism towards, you know, one sector of society, you know, over other sectors. And so I will still be involved in community service. I will still do my bit in helping whenever I can, but I'm thinking more of mentoring probably, you know, kids who want to go to law school, who would want to experience, you know, or see, you know, what a jury trial looks like, and so on and so forth. But not so much anymore into getting involved with a particular sector of society, because that could avoid appearances of impropriety, which I would not rather be involved in at all.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I'm almost done with my water, Mayor. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
And, and we know better that, basically, you're, she's ruled by the Superior Court, basically.
Yes.
And it's not the city council or the mayor that has anything to do with the opposite there.
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I've gotten involved with, with Vanessa, and Mr. Kissinger, and Mr. Massey, is because we're trying to build a new court.
Oh, yes, of course.
Right across the, the fire department. So that, whoever takes the position of city magistrate will not have to deal with legislative body.
Yes.
You know, we, we set policies and we legislate, and that's all we do. But, but honestly, I think you, you, you're doing very good, and, and I really don't have anything else, because you've answered everything very, very professionally, and, 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 and I don't see any, any nervous reaction from you. So I think you would sit on a bench as a judge, and you would do a great job. That's what I would do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything else to say? No? No? So with that, I think we're, we're okay now. We're done.
Yes, thank you so much. So I would just like to thank you all for taking time off your, your very busy schedules to meet with me, and, and ask me my views and questions about my personal background, and how, how I could be a good magistrate for the, for the city of Nogales. And I, again, thank you very much for your time.
And, and you, and, and you said something that is very true. Nogales is beautiful, and the people of Nogales are very good people.
Yes, they're warm and friendly, and I know that, yes.
We are. We work very hard here in Nogales, and it's a, it's a tough community because of the border.
Yes.
But we still, we still, as a council, we do the best we can to provide the services for the residents in Nogales. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I know. Perfecto.
Good afternoon, Mayor. How are you today?
I thought I knew you, but I see you're not. No.
Okay.
I don't, I think this is the first time we've met.
We met once before, but it's been a while.
Yeah.
Uh, it's been at least three years.
Yeah, it must have been very brief.
It was very, very brief.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, uh, thank you again for, uh, for, um, basically being one of the candidates for, for city magistrate and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, right now what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be, uh, interviewing you and I'll start with me and then we'll go down the line. But, uh, before we do that, you know, even though I read your, your paperwork and everything, could you express a little bit, give us a little bit of history about yourself and, you know, not only of your experience and what you've done in the courts and being an attorney and all that, but, you know, of your life and stuff like that.
I'm open. Okay, very well. Um, what I can tell the, um, the city council is that, um, I was born in Phoenix, Arizona in nineteen eighty. Uh, I'm the, the oldest child. My parents had, uh, three kids. I've got a, uh, younger, uh, sister. I've got a younger, uh, brother. Um, my parents, uh, were immigrants from Mexico into the United States. My mom, um, didn't come to the United States until she was twenty-one years of age. Uh, my dad did come to the U.S., um, if I remember correctly. I think it was either three months or three years. I honestly don't remember. But, um, he was born in Mexico but raised in the United States. Uh, he, he served as a member of the United States Military Corps. Um, my mother and father, um, neither of them completed their high school education. And, um, as a result of that, they had kind of, you know, crappy jobs and they always made it a a huge priority in our household to, to really plug education and, um, I'm glad that they did because it, it's what allowed me and my brother and sister to, to make it. Um, we grew up poor, uh, but happy. Um, I spent the first ten years of my life living in a mobile home trailer. Um, and then we moved into a house that, that had a pool and that was really cool. We really enjoyed that. Um, but we got lucky because we had parents that really valued education, that, um, helped us with that and that didn't make things easy for us. Um, they, I, I remember growing up in, in, in grade school and all my friends, all my classmates were, were able to, um, order books from like the Scholastic catalogs that they used to have and we never did. I always asked my mom for money and we never had it, so we never could do that. So it really, um, you know, it kinda sucked, but it's, it's one of those things that, um, I guess gave you that esambre. You know, it gave you that hunger to, to, to wanna reach out and, and do some more. And so, um, that's my family. I mean, that's my mom, my dad, it's my brother, my sister. Um, my, we have what I would, I, I think we have public service in our blood. Um, I haven't been doing public service for about two and a half years because I've been running my own business, my own practice. Uh, but even that has been devoted, uh, one hundred percent to, um, public service causes. I represent indigenous people in criminal cases and civil cases. Um, in civil cases, I represent them in, uh, mental health hearings, guardianships, conservatorships. Um, and so, I don't take in any private clients. I don't have any private paying clients. Everything is, is court appointed. Um, and there's been more than enough work to get me by, but, um, my family in Mexico, uh, we're, we're from Chiwawa. Um, but a lot of my aunts, uncles, cousins, uh, they're all teachers. They're all public teachers in Mexico. Um, I myself was a student teacher at a high school in Goodyear, Arizona back in two thousand five and two thousand six. I did get a, um, post-baccalaureate certificate in secondary education because I had planned on becoming a high school teacher, but, um, I didn't do it because I had deferred my admission to law school for two years in a row. And it was just, it was, it just got to the point it's like, are you gonna do it or not? And so I said, I gotta, I gotta go to law school. I gotta figure this out, see if it's for me. And I finished it and, um, my, uh, but again, going back to, to the record of fa- uh, public service, my sister, for example, um, I think she, uh, she, well, I don't know if any of you know her, but her name is, uh, Lorena Rueda. She works at the Arizona Mex- Mexico Commission and so, um, you know, I remember my sister when she started working, um, in public service at the age of eighteen. And slowly but surely, she's been working her way up the, um, the ladder. My brother, same thing. Um, he, he went to college, graduated, he got his master's degree and he started working as a, um, assistant librarian and now he runs his own library branch in, in Phoenix. And so, um, you know, I, I would like to, to follow in their path and, and to continue our record of, of public service. Um, what I can tell the, the council is that, um, you know, I, I think that one of the things that I can bring to the table is that, um, you know, I'm not a local, okay? I'm not gonna pretend that, that, you know, this is where I was born and raised, but, um, I've been here for eleven years. Um, I consider it my home. I own a home in Rio Rico. It's my favorite place to be in the entire world. And, um, I, you know, my family loves it. They come visit me and my parents, in fact, they sold our old home in Phoenix. Um, they bought a plot of land and, plot of land in Rio Rico about a mile away from me and, and they're building. So they're gonna be coming down here, um, in the near future. And what I can tell the council about my feelings about No Gallos is that it's like my dad told me long ago. It's like, mi hijo, mi de tu casa es donde va bien. And that's how I feel. No Gallos has been really good to me. Um, when I, the reason I ended up here, eh, which is kind of, it's a long story, but I'll keep it very short, but, um, I ended up here because, um, well, I think it's just the universe. The universe brought me down here. Um, and what I mean by that is that, um, I had been living, uh, I went to law school in Texas. I, I lived there for three years in Lubbock, Texas. I moved to Portland, Oregon. I spent one year there and it was really hard for me to, to kinda uh, get my feet on the ground. It was very difficult for me to establish myself. Um, I didn't pass the bar exam. Um, I couldn't find work. Um, you know, money was running out. Um, for a period of time, I was what you might call functionally homeless. I was, um, bouncing around from one couch, one friend's couch, to another friend's couch and, um, you know, receiving a lot of help from people just to, to prop me up. And so, I finally had to give up on my dream of making it in, in Portland, Oregon. I came back home to Phoenix with my tail between my legs and, um, it was a really hard part, part of my life, very, very, very difficult. But my, my parents took me back and I studied for the bar here. I passed it on the first try. Um, and then I started to wait to get my bar card, but in the meantime, I tried to look for work and, uh, this is back in twenty-ten. So it was when the economy just completely nosedive, but, um, I started applying for associate jobs in Phoenix. Um, no hits. So I started applying for paralegal work, nothing. Legal secretary, file clerk, supermarket, whatever, nothing. I couldn't get anything. And so I, I found, um, an ad for the Santa Cruz County Attorney's Office. Um, and I looked at the, the post or the, the, the file stamp of the, the, um, the job ad and I realized it was like twenty-eight days old and I was like, I'm not gonna waste my time. Because at that point in time, um, it seemed like if an ad was out, there'd be three hundred, four hundred applicants. And I was like, there's no way I'm gonna make it. So, but actually that's what motivated me to even bother. I said, well, I got nothing to lose, you know? I mean, if I'm not gonna make it, I got nothing to lose. So, um, I did it. And, um, I got a call for the interview. I came down here, um, you know, got the job, which was really awesome because, uh, frankly, you know, I tell, you know, I tell my students that, you know, it's the, the way the world works is like, eh, eh, you know, qual- experience qualifications, that's one thing, but it also helps to know people. I mean, it really does. Um, but I didn't know anybody from No Gallos, not one person. And so this was kind of a cool thing because, um, I got the job on my merits. Okay? I got the job on my merits and like, that really, to me, spoke very highly of this community. Um, it's something that I hold near and dear in my heart to this day. Um, you know, I really care a, a lot about this community because they gave me a chance when nobody else would. Um, and it is like my father said, I mean, it's gone very good for me. And, um, it's my home. It's my home and I care about it and, um, that's why I'm here. Uh, I, I, you know, I think, looking at my qualifications, I mean, I, I think I meet the bare minimums. Um, that's not, you know, I'm not saying that, that's enough, but, um, but I think what I would bring to the table is that, um, you know, I've got a sincere, uh, cure um, for No Gallos. I've devoted my entire eleven years here to public service, uh, both as an attorney and, um, as a instructor at Cochise College and also Pima College. And, um, you know, my, my public service continues to this day. And so I, 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 you know, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. Um, but that's kind of the, the long story, but I mean, what I, what I want you to take away from that is that, um, you know, I highly value education. I had, I value tenacity. Um, I'm not a person that's easily dissuaded. I'm not a person that, um, easily gives up when things go, 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 go tough, but I'm also a person that, um, relies on other people for, for help and support. I've been very fortunate in my life to have, uh, good parents. I was very fortunate in a very difficult point in my life to have good friends that offered me their homes, their beds. so that I can, you know, slowly but surely get myself back on my feet. And so I am a firm believer in teamwork. And so you know, one of my drawbacks is that I am very independent, fiercely independent. I do a lot of the stuff myself, my own business, for example. I, you know, I'm my bookkeeper, I'm my paralegal, I'm my file clerk, I'm my everything. But even there, even there, I realized that, you know, hey, you know, it's good to do everything, but you know, you still, it's good to ask for help. And so I have an answering service, for example, that helps me. I work with my colleagues, other defense lawyers in in the community. We bounce ideas off of each other. We help each other out. And that's something that I really like about here is that we have that collegiality. You know, I've heard that practicing law in Phoenix and Tucson is just a nightmare. It's cutthroat. That's not how it is here. And we can't be that way. I mean, we cannot be that way because you don't last. I mean, I I mean, I've been here for for eleven years. I haven't gotten small-towned out because I have figured out a way to work with people, okay? And I learned that, well, I want to say I learned it from my parents, but I don't think so. I think I actually learned at the, in law school. I I I studied in Lubbock, Texas. It's a small city. It's about two hundred thousand people. I didn't know anybody in Lubbock. I didn't want to go to Lubbock, but they took me. They accepted me. So I said, all right, I'll go. And but I'm actually really glad that I did because it, things work differently in a small community. They really do. I mean, a handshake means something over there. Your word means something. Texans in particular, they're not for everybody, but what I do like about Texans is that they're blunt, okay? They're blunt, they're frank, and if they don't, if they don't like you, they tell you and they don't care. And I actually really appreciated that. I really appreciated that that frankness. They weren't mean. They were all very polite, but you know, they're direct. They're direct. You know where you stand with them. And I like that. I think I took that away from from my studies in Texas. You learn how to work with the same group of people year after year after year and you learn how to cooperate. You you have to cooperate because if you don't, you don't make it. I mean, you get kicked out of town. And that's probably how it should be because in small communities, we all rely on each other and, you know, nobody knows us better than we know ourselves. And that's something I think is that's also a huge part of me. And it's a huge part of me now because of my education in Texas, because of my living here for the past eleven years. And and that's been on purpose. I mean, I could have gone back to Phoenix way, many, many years ago to get, you know, really high-paying jobs and, you know, I like it here. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
I can go on.
No, that's all right. We only have an hour. No, but it's 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 good. It's good to, you know, that's a lot of information. It's good to know. But you know, I'm sure you know Vanessa Cartwright.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Well, she left a void here, a big void. She she was a very good judge, okay? And and we're hoping to to hire somebody, you know, to fill in those shoes and 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 be a fair person. That's the word, fair, with anybody that goes through that court. She started a program that was basically, you know, being able to pay in installments, not not go after you, not, you know, throw the book at you, nothing like that. She was very good at that and 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 she was really liked liked by the community. Okay, not not by her staff and and the city, which we did, but I'm saying the community. Because I had people that said that to me, that we had a good judge, you know? And and that's good to to know because it's good that people, they need to know that. They need to feel comfortable when they go to the judge, you know, especially when they know they're about to pay a fine, you know? And 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 that's my concern with with a person that needs to fill the shoes.
Sure.
Mr. Rueda, but you know, I also noticed that you helped construct the Circles of Peace. You were part of that?
Well, Judge, I, excuse me, mister, I'm so used to this. Mayor Godino, forgive me. So it's just force of habit. But I'm actually a board member on the the Circles of Peace and so I helped Circles of Peace with their policymaking, decision-making, but I've worked with Circles of Peace. To be honest, like more, my more substantive work with Circles of Peace was when I was a prosecutor. Because I worked with Judge Velazquez, I worked with Circles of Peace, particularly Blanca Costa and Sonia. I forgot Sonia's last name. I think it's Chavez, but we worked on 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 coming up with a drug court. At that point in time, I was handling felony felony drug present, drug caseload, which which encompassed personal possession cases, for sale cases. And frankly, Judge Velazquez came up with the idea. My supervisor, Liliana Ortega, who's who's now judge, you know, tasked me with trying to work with Judge Velazquez, Circles of Peace, to to see what we can do. And it was a collaborative effort. Again, I I would say Judge Velazquez was the brainchild. Circles of Peace brought the, this is how we can do this. And what I brought to the table was like, well, I mean, is this gonna work? Is this something that's gonna be feasible? And I remember the first proposal by Circles of Peace at that point in time was this long three-stage program that was gonna last like a year and a half. And I just said, I'm sorry to burst your bubble, but this is not gonna work. I mean, I need like an eight-week, you know, we need, we need, you know, we need to like cut this down a lot, you know, we need to get something just a little bit more watered down because they're not gonna make it. I mean, these 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 defendants are not gonna make it. We're setting them up for failure. We need something that's a little bit more manageable. And frankly, my my main goal at that point in time wasn't really to to rehabilitate anybody. And I'm I'm not gonna lie. I didn't really think that was gonna be possible. I mean, I thought I was dealing with, at that time, we were only doing this for for marijuana cases, personal possession marijuana cases. And frankly, I was just trying to find a way that I could help these kids avoid a felony conviction on their record so that they wouldn't have that holding them back in their future. Frankly, I just thought, you know, these kids are just out there smoking dope with their buddies. I mean, why are we here? I mean, I it just could seem kind of like a waste of time, but I realized that we couldn't just blanket dismiss the cases. And so I said, well, what can we do to get them to earn a dismissal? And so that's something that we came came up with and they they worked with me and we ended up doing it that way. And what I discovered though was that, again, my goal wasn't to rehab rehabilitate anybody. I didn't really think it was gonna work. But part of the program involved the students doing some drug testing. I was shocked when the first round of drug tests came back because they were all doing hard drugs, every single one of them. I mean, the squeaky, clean-looking kids were all doing hard drugs. It blew me away. I didn't realize that that was going on. And so now I said, all right, well, I guess this is a good thing then. I guess this is a good thing for them. And when what I found out later was from from Blanca and and Sonia, some of the stu, some of the kids were able to complete the programs and they got their their cases dismissed. But they had good things to say about the program and the participation of these these young adults. What I really liked about it was that the kids met with Circles of Peace staff, counselors, but family. Their family came in there and met with them. And so the kids were able to get some education about the drugs, drug, you know, avoiding drugs, but also kind of work out relationships, mend relationships within their families that I think caused them to to use these hard drugs. And so that's my experience with Circles of Peace. I think that's much more much more substantive experience than what I'm doing right now. What I'm doing right now is basically reading emails, reading proposals, like, yeah. I think my work as a prosecutor on Circles of Peace and with Judge Velazquez and and Judge Ortega and and everybody else that was involved was was really important. And I I I continue to this day. Now, I I worked on the other side. We have a a drug court that's been recently expanded to include hard drugs, not just personal possession marijuana cases. And so I now represent the people that are benefiting from that program. And, yeah, counsel, what I can say is that I, you know, I thought I knew a lot when I was a prosecutor and in the past two and a half years that I've been doing defense work, I've I've learned how little I knew. When I was a prosecutor, I didn't realize how prevalent mental illness was in 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 the community or drug abuse. The two of those things working together and I deal with it on a day-to-day basis with all my clients. And so it's it's important for us to have programs like this. And I think it's also important for us to have people that have access to, well, agencies, other people that can make things happen. And I, for example, had a case in the, in in our municipal court, court, the Nogales Municipal Court. I remember, I think it was in in August of of this past year, but I was representing a defendant who, I don't know how he landed here, but his ties, according to him, to me, were from Indiana. And so he was in jail on my cases, three of them. I met with them and the first time that we met, he started talking about spaceships and satellites. And the reason I mentioned that is because it clearly indicated to me that something's not, something's not right here. And so I asked Judge Cartwright to order him to be evaluated for for competent competency to stand trial. And so we went through that process and we did get a report back that said he was not competent to stand trial. But while we were waiting for that report, we had another hearing in the interim. And at one of those hearings, my client was in our court handcuffed. Judge Cartwright had asked me to pass him some papers so I can, some forms so that he could sign and and they they could be filed with the court. But, you know, as I, as I'm coming back from the bench to to visit my client, he started eating a a sanitizing napkin that I think, I don't, I don't remember who gave it to him or how he got it, but he just, he had a napkin in his mouth that I had to take out and throw away. And that was really shocking to me because it had been a few weeks that I had, since I had seen him and it clearly signaled to me that he's going downhill and he's going downhill fast. I mean, his 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 mental state is completely rapidly deteriorating. And so after that hearing, I think that same day, I I reached out to the prosecutor at the the Santa Cruz County Attorney's Office who handles these mental health cases. And I and I told her, I'm like, listen, my client's in inmate custody. He was trying to eat this towel today. I think something's wrong. So can you guys look into this, please? I mean, and you know, if there's anything I can do to help you with this, please let me know. I will. And so luckily, we have, I've I've got a really good relationship with that prosecutor and with the jail staff. And so she got on it right away. And so within the next couple of weeks, he he had been taken from the jail to the to the Palaverdi Behavioral Health Center in in Tucson. He got stabilized. In the meantime, I worked with Greg on 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 the city court cases to see what we can do. And at the end of all that, we got a really good result. I mean, I got a really good result for my client. I got the city court cases dismissed. We were able to get him the mental health treatment that he needed to get stabilized again. But not only that, the mental health professionals were able to find out that he actually had ties to Teros in Phoenix, which is another social service agency. And so at the end of all this, my client left Nogales with no criminal convictions. He had transport back up to Phoenix so that he can resume his mental health, behavioral health treatment up there. And so that was really cool. And that was really cool because we had a great judge. And we had a very good judge that that worked with me. We had good professionals working together to produce a result. And, you know, frankly, it was a little case, but I think it's the case I'm most proud of because, you know, all defendants want to get dismissals. They're feeling hard to come by. But frankly, that was never my goal in this case. My goal was just to give my client some help. And when I found out that, you know, I got his cases dismissed and that, you know, not only that, but we were able to get him back to Phoenix to to get stabilized. That to me was the the best outcome possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rueda. Vice Mayor, you're next.
Well, I was really, really going through your reference and they mentioned here that in your free time, I don't know how in the world you have a free time.
It's very little.
At that time, you you also wear a t-shirt at the college. And my God, they mentioned you're so a compassionate person. Also, they mentioned that you're bilingual, which is, God, that's very, very good. I I can only say, I mean, it's, no, I think that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
And I I wish you the best.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
And that's all.
Counselor, yes.
I'll make it quick.
Well, thank you very much for for applying with us here today. It's a pleasure to have have you here.
Thank you.
And talk to you and and read your resume. It's quite impressive. Like the Vice Mayor says, where where do you have time to do all this? You know, it's 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 really impressive, everything you do. You do a lot of community service, which I commend you for that. You you done business on your, by, you know, your own private practice. I'm I'm a businessman too. I started off with my dad and all that, but that's a different story. So
It's a lot of work. I thought it was gonna be less work.
Maybe one day we can, we can go have a lemonade or something. I'll tell you all about it. But here in Nogales, we have, we have Nogales Sonora, Mexico, which is like five hundred thousand people. And we rely on on retail trade, you know, for our existence. The city of Nogales survives on on retail tax. So reading what what the job description is, you're you you are independent in how you treat your cases as far as leveling fines and all that. And what 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 we what we need to do is a lot of, I don't know how much, how many people they cite here or anything like that. But but the people from Mexico don't know all our our laws and regulations. And sometimes, you know, they innocently, they they break the law and then they get caught and and then they get sent downstairs to the the municipal court. So we have to, we have to be compassionate and we have to be just as far as how we treat these people because over there, their their minimum wage is ten dollars a day. And and most of them come over to to get a gallon of milk or a pound of beans or whatever, whatever's more expensive over there. So how how do you feel about about dealing people that come, that would come to your court and say, well, I don't have any money and I only make ten dollars a day. Can you help me out? Would you be willing, within the boundaries of the law, to help these people out and 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 educate them and and maybe, you know, just help them out? Are you, are you willing to do that?
Yes, absolutely. But you have to be careful.
Sure.
Because you want to make sure that everybody is treated equally. And, you know, frankly, yes, I mean, the short answer to the question is yes. The long answer is that, you know, you just want to make sure that you don't fall into a place where you get accused or that it looks as though you're you're singling a particular group for a particular result. I frankly think that, you know, we have a lot of people in our own community and and I include people from Nogales, Sonora as being part of our own community. I tell my friends back in Phoenix that, you know, I kind of see Nogales, Arizona, is just kind of like, it's the American suburb of Nogales, Sonora, Mexico. I mean, we have so many ties to Mexico that it's just one community. It's one community, but certainly, absolutely, I think that we can work with those with our with our our brothers and sisters across the line. We should. Because we 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 depend on each other. And I think that I wouldn't have any problem with the compassion or actually understanding the situation across the line because, again, I I got family. Because again, I, I got family that lives in Mexico. I've got, my spouse's relatives live in Emocio. We went to San Carlos this weekend. And so they live way differently than, than we do. My, my family in Ciudad Juarez and other parts of Chihuahua, they live way differently than, than we do. And frankly, anytime I come back from Mexico, I just say, we're just the richest people in the world. I mean, we are so incredibly wealthy down here. We take so many things for granted. So I know, I know how, how far a American dollar can stretch in, in, in Mexico. And I also know that there's other ways to dole out justice. And frankly, I think the best way to dole out justice is by education. I mean, I, I view my job as a lawyer, you know, more so as a lawyer is like an educator. And I'm educating my clients about what their rights are, the strength of the case against them, what their options are. And so I view myself as an educator. And I think a judge would do, or should do the same thing, help educate the community about the role, the role in alleged misconduct, but also what they can do to, to make things right and what they should know so that this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, that's good. And I see that from your resume that you, you educate a lot of people, a lot of different departments. Done a lot of training with law enforcement and.
I love teaching. It's my passion.
I see that, yeah. I, I, I work a lot with National Insurance Crime Bureau and auto theft and, and all that. Stolen vehicles that are recreated for Mexico.
I did too.
And I do all that stuff.
Yeah, I, I worked with them for many years. That was, that was my favorite assignment as a prosecutor is working the, the stolen car detail, meeting all the NCIB people, meeting people from all the different agencies and doing the international auto theft investigators. I mean, I loved it. It was a good group of people.
Yeah, I, I even got to go to a prosecution in Mexico.
Yeah.
Of somebody that committed auto theft here in cahoots with a relative in Mexico.
Did you ever?
One, one day I'll tell you about that.
Did you ever meet Dennis Frias, out of curiosity?
Dennis who?
Dennis Frias.
We, we do, he's up in California.
Yeah.
We, we do a lot of back and forth.
Yeah, Dennis Frias, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I work with Dennis to get some cars.
Mario Crosswell?
I don't know him.
Yeah, he's in Texas, but he's part of, he's part of Oprah.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
They're gonna kill me over here. But yeah, well, thank you for, for, for applying. And maybe one day we can get together and just talk about all this other stuff. Cause yeah, it'll, it'll take all the time here. So.
It's Michael.
How can see, we got time. We're still, yeah, we still got time here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying, Mr. R. I'm, I'm glad you're not nervous. Okay, thank you.
I'm seeing your resume and Councilman Diaz alluded a little bit to your community and public service. You know, I was looking at the Better Courtroom Testimony Training and stuff like that. Would you be implementing that, that type of training here for the city of Nogales?
Sure, absolutely. I mean. Put it in this box, okay? And that would give me an idea, honestly, of what people are not happy with. Going right from, you know, right from the get go. And then that would give me something to, to know. Very, very valuable information for me to know that I could use to try to figure ways to, to fix those problems. Because we all do. Every single one of us has complaints about our job, even me. Even though I'm my own boss, even I have those complaints. But I was thinking that would be something that I would do. Another thing I would do would be to try to host maybe monthly lunch sessions with the staff. Take them out to a restaurant. Let's just, you know, calm down, you know, let's engage, let's, you know, air it out all out. The other thing I was thinking I could do would be to, and I really mean this. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a jack of all trades, really hands on. I started working in the legal business when I was 17, working as a legal secretary for a personal injury lawyer in Phoenix. And I've done it all. I mean, I've worked my way from the bottom all the way to where I'm at right now. And it would really, one thing I'm really interested in doing, if I'm, if I were to be given this position, would be to go to everyone that works at the city court and say, show me how to do your job. You know, show me how to do your job, then let me do your job. You know, give me, you know, give me an hour, let me do your job so that I can learn their job. See if there's ways that I can improve efficiency or, or, or learn about their struggles. Deal with the people face to face from our community. I'm sure there's ways that we can, again, if we, even if we can't promote people to positions with higher pay, if we can make their jobs easier and if we could make them not have to, you know, pop a vein every morning that they get ready to work and, and, and have to drag their feet to work, I think that's a win. And, you know, thankfully, I've had some good work experiences where I've had jobs where I didn't have to drag my feet, where I actually enjoyed going, and I've had jobs where I did. And so I look back at those bad jobs that I've had, that I didn't like, the people that I didn't like at those jobs. And they're my best teachers because I know not to do what they did.
Thank you. And, and, you know, just following up on the same question, how do you feel about good morale in your department?
Say again?
Good morale. How do you feel?
Feel about, I'm so sorry.
About the good morale in your.
Oh, morale is super important. I mean, loose lips sink ships. I mean, if people aren't happy, I mean, they just start talking, talking, talking and like, it's really important. It's, 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 it's everything. Yeah. It's, it's very, very important. I think that, that that's something that I, I'm very cognizant of also. And yeah, you have to have good morale, otherwise you're just not going to be able to do anything other than fail.
Mr. R, very much for your answers and thank you for applying. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi, Mr. R.
Hi.
I've seen your work personally. And you are not just amazing. You are very intelligent. You are also fair. And you've worked your way up and you might not have been born and raised in Nogales, but you're part of this community. And I'm one for supporting people that are part of the community, have lived in the community, have worked in the community, have been, you know, a part of mingling with the commi- community. So I, I, you know, I look at your, your resume and like my fellow colleagues here and it's impressive. You've done everything. You've worked your, your way up. And like Sonia Sotomayor says, you know, we stand on the shoulders of, what did she say, of countless people. And we have, and I agree, we don't get where we are without standing on shoulders of countless people. And it seems like you have done that and you appreciate people that have helped you. And so having said that, you know, why do you want to be a judge? You have a successful law firm. Why do you want to, other than being a judge, right? Having the title of being a judge, why do you want to be a judge?
I mean, on a personal selfish level, you know, three years ago, I didn't have the pleasure of, of meeting everybody. I think that, that's the one thing that was missing last time that, that, that I think we would have all enjoyed. But I remember when I told my mom that, that I was the finalist. I just remember like that look. I mean, I'll never forget the look that she gave me. And like, I knew she was proud, but I was proud too. And yeah, I want to see that look again, you know, but this time say that, um, it's me, Biddle. Selfishly, that's, that's the selfish reason, okay? But the, the other reason is because you're right, you bring up really good points, like, why do this? I mean, you got a really good business. Why, why, why would you do this? And the answer is, well, I've got goals in my life. And my goals have always been to, you know, I want to be a prosecutor. I want to do criminal defense work. I want to be a judge. And I want to cap my career in law as a, a law professor. And so I've done the prosecutor work, I've done some defense work. And I'm just trying to get to that next, next level, however I can. And then, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's my, my game plan. I would like to end up as a law school professor at some point in the future. That's really what, what I want to do. Not to say that I don't want to be doing what I'm doing now, but that's my end game. And that's one of the reasons I, I, I would like this position. But, but also because I think I would just really enjoy it. I think I could, I sincerely think I could do a good job. I care a lot about the community. I want to give back to the community that, that's given me so much. I mean, I've got, you know, good friends. I've got a nice house. I've got a great job. I've got four kids. They don't have four legs and fur, but all my dogs and cats are from Nogales. And I just would like to, to give back in any way that I can. And like I said earlier, I think public service just kind of runs in my family's blood.
Yeah.
Um, we just try to, you know, we just naturally gravitate towards that.
Yeah. And, and I like the fact that you say you want to give back to the community because that's really important. Because after all, that's, that's a very positive trait. Because sometimes we can become selfish and, and not give back to the community after the community has done so much for us, like giving us retirements and so forth and so forth, right? But I have one more question and what can I ask you, right? You have a most perfect resume and experience. I've seen you firsthand, work with the community. But can you describe the most ethical dilemma that you've encountered? And how you handled it and, and how will you on the bench?
Yeah, um, let me think. Well, what I keep thinking about is that in my profession, we have kind of a code. And, you know, they, they say that lawyers are supposed to be self-regulating, you know, we regulate ourselves. But, you know, I've had instances where I have cause to believe that some of the lawyers that, that I've worked with, you know, I, I, I don't agree with the way they've done things. And, you know, one option that we always have is to just rat them out to the bar. And maybe I shouldn't use the term rat, but.
No, don't.
But again, like I, I really firmly believe in trying to work with people before you go over their heads. And so, you know, I've had situations where I, you know, I've had to make a choice about, well, do I just go over their heads and, you know, sit back and watch the show or do I kind of try to work with them one on one? And so I've chosen the latter. I don't know if it's the right thing to do, but that's just kind of my, my way of doing things. I can tell, you know, everybody that, that, you know, I had, I, I was doing some research on Tuesday because I had a, I represent somebody and I have reason to believe that they were a victim of a crime involving sexual abuse. And I, you know, I was like, well, am I, am I, am I a mandatory reporter? Am I required to do some mandatory reporting here? I couldn't remember. And so I looked at the statute and I'm not. I'm not required to do any mandatory reporting. And it looks like the, the abuse was already reported, but then I'm like, well, do I need to, you know, I know there's an investigation going on, but I don't, I don't know if it's stall. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. And so frankly, I'm kind of like, that's one thing I'm dealing with this week. I'm trying to figure out what it is that, that I need to be doing in this case. Because frankly, it just doesn't seem like, even though the law says I can sit back and go to Hawaii and do nothing, it just doesn't seem to be the right thing to do. And so I'm kind of, I'm still working on that one. But, but that's, I think, an example of a situation where I've got a true conflict because I think the law doesn't require me to do anything. I feel like I should do something. But I'm also thinking about how is it going to impact my client? How's it, you know, what's the short term? What's the long term of this? And so I haven't worked out any of these things, but that's, that should give you some insight on, 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 on how I handle these things. I mean, I don't make split second decisions. I don't go for, I mean, I think the easiest thing to do would be to just, you know, open up my mouth, you know, go over people's heads and sit back and watch the show, but I just don't do that. Again, I don't know if that's right or wrong, but, you know, I like to, to work with people and, and try to at least give them a chance to, to work things out.
In other words, you're not impulsive. You think about what is in the best interest of both parties.
Well, I try to.
Try to, yeah. That's all I have and I like your socks.
Oh, thank you.
Good luck, Mr. R.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bye bye.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I always do. I talk too much, Biddle was. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it very much. Thank you very much for having me here. Con permiso. Con permiso.
There it is.
Mr. Gilliland, good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Yes. I'm glad you made it from the metropolis city of Duncan.
You know, it's really populous this time of year. I think Duncan counts with eight hundred residents.
The last time I was there, I went there for a seagull meeting. They represent seagull and it was a while back. But it's got history, doesn't it?
It does have history.
Yes, a lot of history, yeah. Yeah, but don't talk to the passenger in the car when you're driving through.
You'll miss it.
You're gonna miss it, huh?
I was telling a friend that in our county, there are two stoplights, and they're both up in Merencie on mine property, right? Like, you just miss the whole thing if you don't.
Yeah, I know, it's a nice place though. Is that, the school's still on top of the hill there? The school there?
The school, they have, um, the, the high school on your way into town yet.
Yes, yes. I had, you know, the meeting, we had the meeting in, in like the, the main street, a very old building there. What is that building? I can't remember what it was.
It's, um, it's a bed and breakfast now?
Is that, oh, is that what it is right now?
I think that's what.
Yeah, cuz I'm talking about maybe, maybe ten years ago that I was there.
I don't know, I know that there's.
It looked like an old, old hotel or something like that.
Yeah, they, they have it, they run it there as a, as a hotel.
Yeah. I'd never been there till I was at a meeting. Luckily, luckily, uh, the, the, when you go to seagull meetings, whoever's hosting it, they bring food to everybody, you know? Cuz I, since I was driving over, I didn't see any, any restaurants or anything.
Right, there are, I think there are three restaurants in town. One is a pizza place and one's kind of a Mexican food. But all of the restaurants in Greenland County, they kind of do, a salad bar and hamburgers and burritos, like, just the same, same old, same old.
All right, so, uh, before we get started, the interviews will start with me and then we'll go in that direction with the members of the council. But before we get started or anything, first of all, I want to thank you again for, for participating in this interview. And, and, uh, just give us a little bit of history about you and not only in your employment and your legal status, but a little bit of yours, yourself, you know? Basically, simple.
Sure, I grew up in, in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm one of ten children, my, my parents had, had ten kids and, um, I have fifteen nephews and nieces. I am the favorite uncle cuz I'm the only single one of the uncles. Um, one, one brother passed away a few years ago. Uh, but we have a large family and family's really important to us. Uh, one of the things that we did as family growing up was go down to Rocky Point every year and it was something that I always looked forward to. And so, as a youth, I thought, one day it would be really cool to, to live in, in Rocky Point. That would be an awesome place to, to live. I just, I've always loved the, the culture of, of Mexico. Even when I served as a missionary in California, the vast majority of the Hispanic people that I was, um, assigned to, to preach to or to, to teach, uh, were from Mexico. I mean, they were from all of the South American and Latin American countries, but predominantly, um, predominantly Mexican. And I just fell in love with, with that. In Greenland County where I live right now, there's not a whole lot of opportunity to practice Spanish. There are some, but it's few and far between. In my visits, um, here to Nogales, the first time I came was in high school. We just came as a high school Spanish club and, and, uh, walked across the line and it was, it was magical for me, um, being in a different country. It was this, and, and my parents weren't there. I mean, when we were down in, in Rocky Point, that was always something that they were in charge of and we would go down and have our little vacation. But this, I felt a little more independent that time. I mean, it was just, it was cool being in a different country, in a different space. I, what do you want to know about me? I play the piano, I, um, I love to sing. I have always been involved in our church choirs when we do that. I went to, to school up at BYU and while I was there, I, I participated in the Mormon Youth Chorus. Um, if you've heard of the Mormon Tabernacle Choir, or now it's called the Tabernacle Choir, or the choir on Temple Square, Tabernacle Choir on Temple Square. And, uh, but th- this was a corresponding group of eighteen to thirty-year-old single adults and so I was able to, to participate in that and that was a great experience as well for me. I've loved everywhere that I've lived. I, I started off in Phoenix, uh, went to undergraduate school in Utah. I served my mission in California and law school was in Florida and just I've been able to be a, become a part of whatever community that I've, I've, um, lived and gone to. When I got back from, uh, from law school, I came back to Arizona and I lived in Peoria and then, uh, down to Sierra Vista and currently in Duncan, Arizona for Greenland County. And it's very small, very rural there. About six or seven months ago, I started deciding that I needed to do some more with my life than, than be there all of the time. And so, so I started taking excursions and I met some people, um, here in Nogales and so I started coming here and, uh, just had a, a desire to, to continue being here. I don't know how religious any or all of you guys are, but I kind of feel that God has a word for me here, so that's what I'm doing. I had applied for the job as the pro ten recently and, um, I got to meet with Judge Fink and had an interview with him and that was really a good experience. Um, as you all know, Vanessa Cartwright, Judge Cartwright, got that position, but it left this position open. And it was, um, as, as much as it was a little bit of a letdown there, this just looked like another opportunity to come in and, and see, see if I can try my hand at coming to Nogales.
Those are big shoes to fill, Vanessa's.
I, I, I saw your, your meeting. I was watching your town hall when you were talking about her and she, and I have been in correspondence since then. But I, I understand that she's just done a really great job for you.
And she did very, she did well. She, you know, we haven't had a, a same magistrate done in many, many years.
Yep, in my few conversations with her, I, I've come to understand why she got the job. I, not that I feel like I wouldn't have been able to do it, but, but she's, she's a really good woman and bright, intelligent, hardworking and has a great heart.
And you know, one of the things that, uh, that, that she started here, she started, uh, first of all, she started being really fair with everybody that went through her court, which is good, which is something you want to do, you know, as a judge. I believe that's, that's something you should do as a judge. But, um, but she also created this, the payment plan and be able to talk to the, the people that go, went through their office and find out, you know, how could they pay their bills and stuff? You know, whatever cost it would be for any violation or citation and stuff. And then she worked very closely with the media with Azkaz and with the court system here, you know, trying to get o- other programs going with a community. And, and, and those are the things that I myself, you know, believe that are important, important for, for a city magistrate, you know? And then she, up to the day she left, she was a, a strong supporter of the work that Mr. Kessinger was doing in my office and at the consulate with the new court that were trying to, uh, build just a couple of buildings down the, on the road here on the old Chase Bank. And, and, um, so she was, uh, determined to be part of that to the last minute and, um, the building process, the architect, you know, she, she was really involved in that project. That's probably one of the projects that she probably hated to leave cuz she wanted to do that and we're gonna complete it, you know, as soon as, um, as soon as we get some of the work from the contractors and, and also from engineering, the architects and stuff like that. We're in that process right now to doing that. But, uh, but what, tell me a little bit, how would you fill those shoes when it comes to being a fair judge, city magistrate and, and going about it with your courts day in, day out? You know, cuz I remember a lot of the people you might, that might go through that court are from Nogales, Sonora.
Yep, yep, I, um, have read through the Code of Judicial Conduct and I understand how important it is for a judge to be unbiased, to take the facts that are there, to take, um, Arizona statute and, um, the city charter, the ordinances that you have passed and want to have, um, enforced here, that, to make sure that I, that I can see what's going on and whatever they bring to me, that I'm, that I'm not biased in that. And then as far as, as being fair with people, one of the things that, I was able to participate in a judicial, uh, leadership summit back in November. Judge Stauffer, who's our Superior Court Judge, had selected me and said, "We'd like for you to, to come," and they were talking about mental health, um, courts. One of the things that they have found in the studies have shown is that we've got repeat offenders that are here over and over and over with very low level criminal activities and what do they have in common? A lot of them are on drugs and a lot of them are, um, have mental health issues. And so, um, there are some ideas to, to help get those people the help that they need so that they're not showing back up in court and not clogging our calendars. Of course, I would need to be working with the city attorney on that, um, to, to develop whether or not we could do something like that, to say, "Well, come in and, and let's talk about, here, here are what your charges are. What can we do, um, to help you to get on your medication, to, to go to your appointments?" Um, I, I've understood from Judge Cartwright that, no, it wasn't Judge Cartwright. It was, um, it was Lily Ortega, that there's a, then a problem with transportation for some people getting, uh, drug testing and all those other things done. And, um, so I think that a lot of what I'm gonna be able to bring to that is a problem-solving approach and say, "Well, what do we have in front of us and how can we help our people be better?" They don't want to be in court, right? They're not doing these things because they, they like the judicial system. They don't want to be in jail, they don't want to have to pay all these fines. But how do we get them move beyond that? How do we help them become successful citizens in Nogales?
Ramon, pass it over to the advisor. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Well, I was looking at your, first of all, your reference. It's so nice, they talk about you, I mean, they say you're a great mediator. Also, you're a people person and you're bilingual, which is very, very good for this community. Also, you have strong experience in criminal justice, juvenile and civil matters. And I think your, your resume is more than, than enough. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for coming to Nogales.
Sure, it's a pleasure.
And I see that you're no stranger to Southern Arizona and Mexico, so that's, that's, uh, that's a big plus. I mean, it really is. I see that you work both as a prosecutor and a public defender. Could you kind of tell me what, how you feel about doing one versus doing the other?
So, as a prosecutor, um, it's been interesting because as a prosecutor, you have a, a duty to do the law and you have the facts and usually the facts are on your side. We're just here to tell the truth. When I worked as a public defender, um, it was about help, it was about helping my clients. Now, I have the experience at the public defender's office in not working in criminal law, so I don't know, I don't know that side of things. But when I worked at the public defender's office, it was in child dependency cases. And so, when the Department of Child Safety would come in and remove children from their parents, I got to, to go in and represent either the children or the parents in the aftermath of that to try to get family reunification, which was everybody's goal. I found that as a, as an advocate for an individual in that setting, it was very rewarding to, to be able to counsel with a person and say, "Look, this isn't a criminal case. We're not talking about so much about what happened on such and such a day in, in such and such a place. But we're here to determine whether or not you can convince the state of Arizona to give your kids back to you. And these are the things that I need from you, right? If you give me all of the facts that I need, we will win at trial." But let me tell you a secret. If you give me all of the facts that I need from you, they're never gonna file to take your kids away. And so, it was, it was really rewarding because I got to see some change in people. That, that was really rewarding. There were some times that it was, um, difficult because there would be times that I would tell my client, "This is what you're gonna expect at trial, this is what you're gonna see." These are reasons for us to, to make a deal with the state. And when they wouldn't do that, we would go to a settlement conference and talk with a judge and the judge would tell my client the same thing that I had just told them and then they'd say, "Okay, let's do that." And I feel like the judge has an extra level of, of authority in people's eyes because they, they keep themselves, um, that way. They live their lives in such a way as, as to where they can be trusted. And, and I feel that that's a, a really great place to start to help people when they're coming in with problems. I, I feel on the one side, being a defense attorney was, was more in line with, with how I feel than being a prosecutor. It was difficult for me to take people to trial and, and send them to prison. I think that they would have done better if they had ponied up and said, "I'm at fault here." But it doesn't keep me from going to trial as a prosecutor. I was in trial last week. I did a, it was a misdemeanor bench trial. And it was a, a simple theft case, it wasn't difficult. The guy would have been better off if he had just taken the state's deal. Same thing, uh, a couple of weeks ago, a DUI trial that I took. It's a jury trial, right? And, and same thing there, he would have been better off if he could take his lumps. But, but if he's not going to, then I, then I have what it takes to, to, to bring justice about.
Well, good. When, in a, in a position like, uh, like your position, when you, when you, uh, give the sentence out or when you're doing your job, do you feel like if you're being an educator and you're educating people on the law, not to break the law, these are the consequences and, and things like that? Is that, is that, is, do you feel like if it's your role to be somewhat like a, like an educator, a mentor to the people that, that you're, that you're seeing in front of you?
Thank you for that question. There is a delicate line to, to draw there because as a judicial officer, I can't take sides. But I think that you're right and I've seen plenty of judges effectively communicate to defendants, to talk about where this is gonna be for them. Judge Stauffer, our Superior Court Judge in Greenland County, was great at it and I'd love to, to sit and listen when she talks to defendants about the sentence as she's laying them out. "We want you to be successful." You're gonna, I mean, in felony matters, right? You're gonna be on felony probation, you're gonna have a felony probation officer who's gonna be able to work with you, work with that person. We don't want to see you here again in this, you know, in this setting. You can be successful and it's one of the things that I think people need encouragement. And, and it's a, one of the few places I think it's appropriate for a judge to do that.
Good, uh, one final question, have you been in Nogales, Sonora?
Yes, many times. In fact, I just went to get my haircut there today.
Same haircut as that one. Look closer.
Yes.
Well, good, good, that's some good shoe to cross the line.
That's great. Probably cost you like a peso to do it, huh?
Five bucks. Go to a good place, two hundred pesos.
Good, good.
But still, like, it's ten dollars, right?
No, no, it's the same thing, I, I go to a barber here and they charge me the same thing, they charge the guy that just cut two pounds of hair, you know, and I go, you know, "Give me a break."
Right. I don't have a whole lot here. No, but I got the whole beard thing going, that takes some time too, so.
Well, that's good, that's good. Well, and, uh, uh, how do you, how well do you work with staff and get along with coworkers and?
I wish that you could talk to some of my coworkers about that. Cuz I don't like tooting my own horn, but, but I do have, um, history with, with working with my staff. When I was at the Attorney General's Office, we, each of the attorneys had its own legal team. So I had a paralegal, a legal secretary and a clerk and each of the other attorneys in our office had, had the same. And we were able to get things done together as a group, so much that some of the other, some of the other, um, support staff was a little, was jealous and starting to complain about what was going on and I had to be brought in to say, "We appreciate what you're doing." We appreciate what you're doing, but you pull back a little bit, just because we we. We had some difficult things to do. One of the tasks that we had been given was to go through our our physical files and we were. We were in a transition to make them all digital and so. Um so talking with them, um we we sometimes get some of the extra work done during lunch and I'd bring pizza in in our office. We'd have a little pizza party and get work done. That that was 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 the specific thing that I was told, you can't really do that if you wanna take your staff out to lunch, you can do that, but you gotta take them out. You don't wanna have the other, the other employees seeing that and they're like, but we've got the work done. We got it done, but um but I do work well with staff. I, one of the first things when I'm hiring staff is that I I wanna make sure that they can tell me that I made a mistake, right? Please tell me that I've made a mistake, why? Because then we can fix it together. If you think that everything that I do is perfect, I'm gonna make mistakes, you can make me look good.
Right. Well, good, good. Thank you for your answers, appreciate that. Lots of luck there.
Thank you for applying for City of Nogales, sir. Uh listening to uh their questions, I I've noticed that you've been involved in a lot of domestic violence cases and and and. Child protective issues and stuff like that. And being a de- uh 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 defense attorney and a prosecutor, right? Uh at what point as a as a judge, do you, because you have experience on both sides, so obviously you can tell when. When it, when is it enough when you just seen a person? Uh you know, I don't think that I can extend my compassion as a judge to this person. Did you, would you have that? With that that issue?
That I wouldn't be able to extend compassion to a?
Yeah, you say that, uh repeat offender and stuff like that.
Well, my.
Because you you have both sides, you know, so.
Sure.
You can tell when someone, what I'm trying to wait is when the person is lying. I know people don't lie in court in court, right?
Right, well, but what is what is compassion, right? Compassion is holding somebody accountable. They're not getting anywhere if they keep doing the same thing and they don't have to pay for their mistakes. It isn't, this last jury trial that I had. Half of the people that we brought in for jury selection knew the defendant and said, because I know his family, I wouldn't be able to return a. A guilty verdict. And I think, what kind of family is that? You bring my brother in and if he's, you know, if he's screwing up, I'm gonna say, yeah, he's guilty. And send him to jail or have him pay the fine or whatever's gotta happen because. That's how he's gonna learn, he needs to to pay the consequences. And so I think that there's room for compassion even there. But it isn't compassion to let somebody get away with their actions. I think that the compassion is, you're gonna, you're gonna face the law here. And I don't believe you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Keller.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to Nogales. I'm gonna ask the almost kind of a similar question that Councilman Bonilla asked. When when dealing with a with a with an issue, do you take all the cases? Do you take all the cases the same or do you judge them by the severity of the of the of the charges? Like uh. Like if the like a traffic violation, do you take that more lightly than a the. Uh domestic violence case?
So there are different standards of proof for each of those. A traffic violation is a civil case, it doesn't have to be proved beyond a reasonable doubt. Where um if you're talking about a domestic violence, it it does. And so there there are some differences in the system itself for that. But I'm gonna be taking every case as it comes to me and whatever information is brought by law enforcement, by the city attorney's office. By the defense, um and if the defendant is represented by his attorney. And take whatever they bring into court and make my decision based on on those things that are brought in. Looking at the at the whole picture and making my decision based on what is there. I don't know if I'm answering your question well.
Yes, and and a follow up to that question, regarding the the. Age and sex and and of of the person that you're judging, is that gonna make a a different impact on your decision?
It can, I think that it can in sentencing. As regarding the question of guilt, that won't come into it at all. I I remember in the first year of of being a prosecutor, I I took a a young girl and she was eight, just eighteen years old. I had given her a an offer for a probation guarantee that she wasn't gonna go spend any time in jail. But we wanted to get her help and get her um in drug drug rehab cuz her charges were possession of methamphetamine. That's what we wanted, she wouldn't take that and wanted to go to trial. We went to trial and it's it's that's the trial that I lost, right, and the jury acquitted her. I went and talked to the jury members afterwards and I said, can you tell me what? What went on, what things were good, what things were bad? And the ones that I talked to said, oh, we knew she was guilty, but we just wanted to give her a chance, right? And that's what jury nullification is. I understand that that you want to give more leniency for for somebody who's young, right? Let's give them an opportunity. What what I felt maybe I hadn't done as as good a job as I I could have done was conveying, well, and I can't talk about that to a jury anyway. There may, there was nothing else that I could have done to help that um that particular defendant. And in a small community, I've seen her come back into the system again as a victim of domestic violence where she was battered and bruised. Because she's with a guy who is involved in methamphetamine, right? Her life isn't any better because she got away with. With a with a charge. I I will be taking into account that for young and for old, right, as far, but in sentencing, what's gonna be best for this person? We don't wanna put a mark on somebody if if we can avoid that. We don't want to make anybody think that they're a criminal and then decide that they now can do criminal things because they're a criminal. Um to help people to stay on the on the right path, I think there are some creative ways we can do that.
On a personal note, uh I don't I don't know how big Duncan is, I don't know what the population is. But here in Nogales, uh I know that the on the announcement for the job, it says twenty thousand. But we do have Rio Rico, which is a couple of minutes up up the road. And that's another twenty some thousand people, which. Uh commute to Nogales for for work and school and other stuff. And then we have the Mexican population crossing over from Mexico. Having said that, are your caseload might be a little bit heavier than what you are used to. So I in your personal time, are you gonna have time or are you willing to use some of your? Uh private time to get involved with a with a community?
As much as possible. Um there are some restrictions in the Code of Judicial Conduct about being involved in certain. Types of of community activities and so some of those things I I won't be able to be as involved in. In Duncan, I'm able to to be out there handing out food at the food bank, right? Maybe I can do something like that. They they limit our our um volunteer time. To to things that have to do with justice and and furthering the interest of of justice. And so I don't know um yet whether the schools have a teen court or or things like that that I could be involved in and definitely could do that. It's something that I've always enjoyed, um being part of a community. Um it is bigger than what uh than what Duncan is. But when I was in Greenlee County, I was the chief deputy county attorney. So even though I had a a smaller caseload of criminal cases like you would say here, I also had an office um to run and I had. Uh civil cases, I was involved in the in the current election law, federal election law that I. That I'm working through where the state of Arizona is being sued um by the Democratic Party for. Some of the laws that have recently been been posted about cleaning up voter lists. You probably don't wanna know about all that, but I have al- already have to to make um adjustments in my time. Additionally, um I'm planning on on going back to school and and taking a class. I say taking a class, getting an LLM, it's a master's, a legal master's degree. Uh from Pepperdine University, I've been accepted to that program and that starts in May. Um I will be doing that online. Uh if I get this job, I will be doing it part time.
Okay, my last question, if you if you do get the job, are you willing to relocate to Nogales or?
Absolutely. This is, that's my plan. I've been looking, I've been working with a um realtor. Says this isn't a really great time for for buying, right? Houses are really expensive right now and they're coming off, the amount of of houses that are available are few and far between. The ones that are um livable, I'll I'll say, get swept right off the market before I've even been able to talk to my my. Uh realtor about it. And so then I I look in the rental market until I until I can buy. And there's not a whole lot in the way of rental market here either. I've seen some things posted across the line that can be difficult. Having to deal with with a border crossing every day, I realize that some people do it, but. It it's a a possibility that could happen. Um but it is, I will be relocating here, I will make a way to make that happen.
Thank you very much for your answers and good luck.
Hello and thank you for being here today. Yeah, so um your educational background is so impressive. And I I saw you have a master's in business administration. Um and you're also going back to Saco.
Yes.
Not an easy one, so kudos to you. It's very impressive. And you also have a bachelor's in linguistics.
Love language.
Yeah.
Me to my heart.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I can see the compassion part of of you. You you seem to be very compassionate, um and I like that, um especially in this community. Um and I'm sure uh you heard it from all of us um already, um the people that go to court. Sometimes, you know, they find themselves in a very difficult situation and it's not like they wanna be there. Uh but we all, you know, make mistakes and we gotta face people like you, right? So that's nice to see that um that you have that part, that personality, that characteristic in you. Being compassionate, I think it's really important. Um so also, tell me what makes you uniquely qualified for this uh for this position as as judge?
Um I I think that it's it's a matter of. I don't know, I'm a, I'm gonna go to there, I'm a middle child and. And maybe maybe that's why I'm going back to to study dispute resolution, but that's, I think, what I am all about. There are disputes everywhere, right? And the courtroom is one place. One thing that I learned, that I've learned as an attorney, and I learned it in law school as well, in my pre uh trial class. When we talked about the fact that. Over ninety percent of cases settle and they they don't end up in trial. Why is that? Because the the parties have a better idea. And can come up with better solutions than what the judge has. The judge has a a little bit of information on what is brought into the courtroom. This is all that I have. Knowing that, I. I think that I can make some inroads with the county attorney's office, with the defense bar and say. Bring me some solutions that we can do here and I am willing to work with you. Um I am a collaborator, I am a problem solver. Those are things that will make me successful in this job.
Yeah, and another question, um please describe the most ethical um dilemma that you have um encountered lately. I know you've encountered many in your profession, I know that. Uh and how did you handle it? And how will you once you're uh, you know, in the band, on the bench?
So there was a case that I was I was handling. Um it was a. That one was a a drug case that involved a significant amount of methamphetamine. There were individuals that had been transporting that through our county. One of them um retained an attorney. And that attorney um is known in the prosecuting world as a. As a cartel attorney, right? That that um they represent a lot of people that are involved in in that business. Anyway, his client was in jail and one of the things that we do as prosecutors is get as much information as we can about a case. His client would would call and talk to his girlfriend, right? That's happening a lot. And and there's a recording on the line that says, you're being recorded, don't, you know, don't, don't say anything that is. Or or just know that you're being recorded and and that any of that information can be shared. With the prosecution, well. Um the phone calls were in Spanish that he was making and I was. The attorney that was handling the case and I knew Spanish and so I started listening to these calls. In the middle of listening to the calls, all of a sudden, there was a a male voice, it wasn't his girlfriend, on the phone and speaking in English. And I and I stopped the phone right away and I'm like, this is a different case. And I think that it's his attorney. I I don't know that, but I think it's his attorney. I don't know anything about what their conversation was, I was able to stop it pretty soon, but the ethical rules are pretty clear. You've got to call the other attorney and say, hey, I just, I have access to some information that may be confidential. And so that's what I I I talked with my um with the county attorney and I said, this is what's going on, this is my plan. I'm gonna call and talk to this attorney and let him know, I think that you called on the non attorney line. Or that your client called you from the non attorney line. And I think we have that thing. Will you listen to it? And find out whether this is a call that we should have or not. And he, you know. Calls back or writes back almost immediately and says, that's mine, you have confidential information. He starts filing motions to say that I should be disqualified, that the case should be thrown out because the state has acted in a wrong way. And and here I am, like, trying to do the right thing, right? And and knowing that that things could blow up with this particular attorney based on what had happened. So he files his motion, we have an evidentiary hearing, it's the ti- time that I get to testify as to what happened, right? I'm up on the witness stand for the first time, we have another attorney from the prosecuting attorney's um council in Arizona. Eight pack, great organization for prosecuting attorneys. And they sent in Elizabeth Ortiz and she came in and and uh we had. The evidentiary hearing, I talked about what happened and Judge Stauffer said. Apparently, cuz I wasn't in there for that part of it, cuz I was a witness, I couldn't be in for the proceedings. She said, I hope that all of our attorneys acted act in this manner. It was difficult and I had a lot of. A lot of. Trepidation about that attorney because it had already been hard, it had already been hard. And and I knew what disclosing the information was going to do, even though I didn't know anything about the confidential information. I didn't, I hadn't hear the thing, I had sequestered it right away so that our staff couldn't hear it, I sent it over to him, did all of the things. And yet it created this aftermath of heartache and. How dare he impugn my reputation, right, or whatever I wanna say in these huge words. But at the end of the day, it was the right thing to do and. And I and I learned that things are gonna, they're gonna turn out. It may be more difficult, but they're gonna turn out the right way if you're gonna um work ethically. I will be doing the same thing here. I love the rules, it's one of the reasons I became a lawyer. I I think that they're good for us and if they're not, we go to our representatives and get them changed.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right, um any any idea on how long, I know you're going into executive session. I would hope that at the end of that, you know, but it may not be. Okay. Be in touch. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. It was nice to meet you all.
Hey, um, Mr. Matt, we're gonna take the five-minute recess before we go into executive session. You wanna take the hall first or go into executive session?
Yeah, since we're all here.
Okay.
That's alright.
We move to go into executive session. Uh, the personal interviews.
Yeah. I, I'll take a break.
Thank you.